Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at five P M., and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. We will be, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the four following reasons. First, Master of Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Open media law to review for consideration the release of release. Executive session meeting minutes for the following executive session meetings, and they're listed in the attachment. Two, Master of Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Three, Master of Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A five, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints. And finally, four, Master of Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair so declared, if the chair declares that an open body, wow, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, and with that, we are now in executive session. We are now back in open session from executive session. We will move on to agenda item five. So this is discussion and vote whether to release, partially release, or not release executive session minutes, listed in attachment A. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, to release as redacted the executive session minutes in attachment A from the Board Selecting Executive Session Minutes.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does that suffice, man?
Okay.
Then we have open session meeting minutes from nine-five twenty twenty-three, nine thirteen twenty twenty-three, and nine eighteen twenty twenty-three, so.
Nine fourteen.
What did I say? I'm sorry. I'll just, I'll clean that up. So I'll entertain a motion to approve open session minutes for release for nine-five twenty twenty-three, nine fourteen twenty twenty-three, and nine eighteen twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is whether or not to have town council present at C B A negotiations for the new C B As effective seven-one twenty twenty-three through six-thirty twenty twenty-six. My opinion is that we want council to be present. Is there any issues with that, or?
No, I, I inquired, because it was the last negotiations, I had come in on the tail end of them, and he said sometimes he is and sometimes he isn't, but I, the first one that we're starting is the clerical, and I asked him to be present, just, just, you know, to be present.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure you were all okay with that.
All the C B As I've negotiated, I've had council present, but I could see, you know, some of the simpler ones maybe not, I mean.
I'd rather.
I think. All right, so what if we have them there and then something kind of goes on, they're like, well, I don't need, we don't need them there, we can, you know, pull them away from it, right? Like, because we're paying them by the hour. So we could say, okay, you know, would, as related to Debbie's union, whatever, I'm just throwing something out there, because I don't want to use any union specific. So, you know, we say, okay, you know, we don't need you here, but something else that's a little more complicated, maybe we have them there, we can take it on a one-on-one basis.
Yeah, I think just having the option to always have is, I think.
Yeah.
I like the option of having union available to us. I think some, some of the conversations can be had with the board members right there in person, and as needed, go back to the attorneys and say, hey, what's your opinion on this matter? Should we go forward, redact, you know, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I think for me, some of the stuff, it's, it's not the negotiation piece of it, sometimes it's procedural things, that if you do this, then it precludes you from later on doing that. And those are the things that I look to, to the attorney for, to make sure that I don't go down a path that I can't return on, you know, so.
Yes.
That's why, and I, and I think I, you know, I'm careful to use our resources, but I just wanted to make sure you were okay that I am using town council or that I would like to use town council when needed.
Hundred percent. All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to have town council present at collective bargaining agreements, negotiations for the C B As effective seven-one twenty twenty-three through six-thirty twenty twenty-six.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we gotta figure out who's doing what, so this is a vote of which selectmen will cover each collective bargaining unit upcoming negotiations for the C B As effective seven-one twenty twenty-three through six-thirty twenty twenty-six. Anyone have any kind of thoughts on this?
No, I don't know that it really matters, I mean.
Yeah, whatever you guys have done before.
I, I've done, so I've done firefighters, which I, it was a nice, easy one, so.
Stop drinking, so.
Yeah.
Public Safety Dispatches, Highway Department, Free Town Firefighters.
I saw the last time I did clerical. Doesn't matter, I mean, you're, you're dealing with clerical most of the time anyway, so I don't know if that's.
No, I'll, I'll take clerical just to get, get a role.
Right, so you, so Carlos on clerical, I'll take firefighters, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, and then Highway Department, I'll take, I think that, and then, so Public Safety Dispatch, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, so, you know, I know that language, I'll, I'll, my take now.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion that Selectman Lopes will handle Free Town, the clerical and public safety. Selectman Zager will handle Free Town Highway Department, and I will handle firefighters.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, so agenda item nine, this is to vote on the town offices services hours for the days after Thanksgiving and observation, observation of the Christmas and New Year holiday. So observance, I can't say observance, that's what I was looking for. Sorry, long day. So what page is that one on?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
So the, yeah, the day after Thanksgiving is not a holiday for the unions, so in the past, you have closed the town hall.
Given them the option to come in and work.
Right. I never have a sense of who's going to be there or not be there that day. So it's hard for me to gauge it and know whether we would have enough to. I don't have a problem with the town hall being open, but people may come and not be able to be serviced.
Yeah, so I think that's right, your point is that's what we've done, we've closed off the town hall to public, but allowed the employees to work or take the day off, right?
And use their personal time to take the day off.
But it's a Friday, right, so it's half day. Oh, yeah, it is, always has to, makes sense, yeah.
Yep, so I, I, I don't have a preference either way, I just. That's what's been done in the past.
It's always been one of those things for me where it's tough, because you have a lot of people that are off from work, so they might want to come in, but it's something we've always given to the employees, and I have a hard time going against the employees, they work hard, and, you know, a lot of people get it off, so it's tough to say, okay, they get it off and you don't.
I agree, I, I feel the same way, it's, it's after the holidays, there's families still around, and it's just that time of year to spend time with loved ones. You know, being so busy with, everyone so busy with work and day-to-day activities, it gets tough these days, you know, so giving them an extra day to kind of break bread and give a hug and thanks.
I'm still hungover from turkey.
That's right, plenty of turkey sandwiches the next day.
I'm okay with that.
So Thanksgiving will remain, we'll close the building, but employees can work if they choose.
Yep.
And then Christmas and New Year's, I don't know what the dates are.
Christmas is on a Monday.
Christmas is on a Monday, so we would be closed for that day, that's a holiday for all of the unions. Transport station is closed on Mondays. Anyway, I think, and so they, they normally take the Tuesday as a holiday.
Yeah, that's, that's what you have in that Tuesday, the twenty-sixth is a paid holiday.
So there's nothing really to vote on Christmas, right?
No.
This is that we're going to be closed on that Monday, the town hall will be closed on Monday, and that this, the transfer station is going to be closed on the Tuesday. And the same thing with New Year's, that it'll be closed on Monday.
Yep.
And the transfer station will be closed on Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it's all straightforward to me.
And then the holiday party, we're looking at December fourteenth, and we usually get a vote to close the town hall at twelve-thirty to go to the holiday party at one o'clock.
All right, so should I break this down to individual motions, that'd be easier, or?
I would think you should be, if, do you want to do it individual motions? Because if we all are in agreeance, do you think it makes sense?
Whatever is easy.
Yeah, okay, we can do this one, so I'll entertain a motion that the town hall will be closed day after Thanksgiving, but employees are still, can still come in and work on Christmas. The libraries and highway department will be closed, as well as the town hall on Monday, twenty-fifth. The transfer station will be closed Monday for the C B A, and we'll observe Christmas holiday on the Tuesday. December twenty-sixth is their paid holiday. And on New Year's Day, the town hall, C O A, libraries, and highway departments will be closed that day, and the transfer station will be closed on Monday for the C B A, they will observe Christmas holidays on Tuesday, January fourth is a paid holiday. And on December fourteenth, the town will close at twelve-thirty for staff to attend the holiday party.
I would just put in there what's going to close on that one.
Sorry, yeah, so on Thursday, December fourteenth, the town hall, C O A, libraries, and transfer station, and highway departments will close at twelve-thirty for, for the staff to attend the holiday party.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a clunky one, you have to clean that one up, you know. Sorry, long day. Okay, so that we got done. And that took care also of agenda item ten. All right, now, we're getting to you. One, one more motion, one more vote, so agenda item eleven is whether to approve the following snowplow contracts for winter twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We have Ronnie Freights, Nate's Oil Burner Services, Inc., Wayne Cotro, S M Automotive L C, and Shane Tavars. Any issues with these?
No, I think it looked like they had all the paperwork in, so.
Yep, no concerns?
All the paperwork was in, they did also make the deadline to get the extra five dollars per hour.
Good for them.
Okay, hats off to them.
Yeah, all right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the aforementioned plow contracts for the winter twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a discussion and vote on whether to approve the requested fee increases from the building commissioner as noted in attachment A.
Attachment B.
Attachment B, wow, my brain is just not working.
That's what happens when you have a baby.
I have a baby and then working all day, and then comes. What page is that on? There's so much, this packet's so big because of all the applications. All right. Well, thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
So, I mean, I looked at some of the, I looked at all these increases, they are, you know, pretty substantial, but it appears to me that we were playing some catch-up with our neighboring communities. So, and I, I really appreciate how you put, you know, the other towns, I'm not sure if you, someone put together.
Oh, Kyle, can you turn your microphone on? Push the button right in front of you.
Oh, it's on the.
On the base.
If it's not on, it's underneath it.
Okay, so on the bottom, there's a button. We all heard this out earlier today.
Thank you.
All set now.
So the, my office staff did do a survey of surrounding towns with similar demographics and population, we found out we were underneath the price, we were lowballing throughout the whole thing, and, and some things, so in some cases. For example, so if we get an application for twenty-four thousand dollars of windows in the building, we get fifty dollars, which is, is, is low, so we looked at Krishna in, in Fairhaven, for example, pellet stoves, who were charging fifty, we suggested a hundred, that's more in line with their charging, so we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we're right in where we should be, I think. The other point is that we also increased the inspections for our electrical and gas inspectors. Went up thirty-five to fifty, which has been thirty-five for a long, long time, so we were just trying to have some parity, some, being equal, and we found to be where, where we should be, these are the increases that we suggested that the board look at.
Any questions?
No, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, no, I think it's, if it's done in other towns, and to your point, I don't want to see us lose money, so.
Yeah, though, when people complain, can I put, point them towards you to suggestions box?
So we're not going up on everything, just where we needed to, just become equal, an equal playing field with other towns, so this puts us right where we need to be.
All right, perfect.
Well, thanks for being to our attention, that's, that's great that we're updating our systems in the way we.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the point of permidize, which town spent some money for the automatic permitting, that's, that's changed our life in the office, so we don't have as many people coming in, the turnover on the application a day or two, which is really.
That's fantastic.
We're doing a great job with that, so the town did a great thing there.
That's exactly what that purpose is for, and it warms the heart to hear that it's actually working as it should, so that's fantastic.
Well, sometimes I get an application from somebody at two o'clock in the morning, some contractor can't sleep that night because there's a working on it.
So he's, he's putting in his application for a permit, and we get it in the morning, we try to turn it over the same day, so it's working out real well. Oh, that's awesome, that's great, yeah.
Awesome, any questions or concerns on this?
No, I've looked at this, I think the only question I have, which I can address with Kyle at the office, but it was the, we have the large solar farms, is that, because these are less than twenty-five kilowatts.
I think that, when I looked at the solar, where, where, where we should be with that, especially with the large solar farm, I think we're okay with that.
You know, they're, they're, they're large, but other than that, I looked at all of the research they put together, and I was, I was okay with that. We did increase our inspection fees from thirty-five to fifty dollars, which was a big jump, but I think that was deserving of the inspectors, but of course, now we have to have our fee, you know, we're charging twenty-five for a permit, and we have to pay fifty for an inspection of that permit, so this, this increases is what we need to do to keep us kind of breaking even with some of this stuff, and some of them, we're still not even breaking even, because we're going to pay for two inspections, and it's a single permit fee, so I think this is needed, hasn't been updated in a while.
Quite a while.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good to me. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the requested fee increases from the building commissioner as noted in attachment B.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good work.
Thanks. All right, so agenda item thirteen, this is discussion and vote whether to approve the request to restrict pedestrians from crossing the Chase Road Bridge over Route one forty during construction, and so.
It begins.
This is going to be interesting, so obviously, it looks like by reducing, like, not having pedestrians, it's going to potentially speed up the timeline of construction, right? Is, and there is a way to get there, you just have to go down by Gurney's Sawmill, right?
Right.
You can go around the back, it probably doubles the, the walk.
It's good, good for the heart.
Yeah.
Now, I think, I think speeding that up is probably everybody's best interest from all the, the amount of traffic that that area receives in getting it done, what are we talking about, thirteen months, eighteen months, right? That's what the last estimates were.
That's like nineteen months.
Yeah.
So. Let's face it, it's a safety issue, right? So that's the thing, it's the, the person that's crossing over, it's a safety issue for them, so I think it's.
Yeah, it's a safety issue, but also think of, like, it's very lightly trafficked, right? There's not a lot of people walking there, and, and, but if there's even one person walking there, we allow one person, then they have to have all the, the safety kind of, you know, Jersey barriers and for walking, like, so it makes the whole thing, I'm sure, much more complicated by having that, and, you know, it might not, it might just be easier just to not have pedestrians walk on that for this time period.
More for people going out there with their dogs and strollers and just a general walk, but we also need to get this thing up and open as quickly as possible for the volume of traffic that supports the businesses that are there as well. Yeah, I think it's just, it's just safer keeping it closed.
Yeah.
Because right now, all they have to walk over is the sidewalk on the bridge, correct? Right?
Yeah.
And then when we get past the highway, it doesn't really have a sidewalk, it's really just road.
They walked over there in a while, but yeah.
There is no sidewalk over with a on-ramp and off-ramp off.
So potentially creating another barrier for these construction vehicles and the crews and staging might be impacted as well. My opinion is, close it and get it fixed as quickly as possible.
Yeah. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to restrict pedestrians from crossing Chase Road Bridge over Route one forty during construction.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item fourteen, this is whether to use funds from donation accounts to purchase town polos. Want to give me, I saw the polos, I saw the form here.
We have a, a don, a town hall donation account that people over the years have donated, and it has to be used for the employees. So it's been sitting there, you know, I think there's seventeen hundred dollars in there, and this is, Kim had told me that it just has to be used for the town, town employees, so like, I don't know, but obviously, that's reducing its value in terms of what it can buy, right, as each year goes by, so I thought, oh, on Fridays, when we have dress-down days, maybe it would be nice to get polos with the town seal on it for the employees, so I think they're about thirty-five dollars apiece, so I wanted to just ask your permission to, if, if that was okay, to use the money that was donated for town hall employees to buy polos. And like other departments, like the fire department has their own shirts, the tra, the transfer station has their own shirts, the, almost every other department has their own shirts, but we don't. So I just thought it was a nice gesture.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I like that idea, I like, like, I saw the one that Tim was wearing not too long ago, similar to that, and I was like, hey, that's sharp, I want one of those, that looks nice.
Yeah, I think the clerk makes those, I'm not sure, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a great idea, it's.
I just wanted to ask your permission to, to make sure there wasn't any, like I said, it's not a huge amount of money, so I can't do a ton with it, but it's also just nice to recognize our employees. We do have wonderful employees, I, I probably, I don't, I don't say it to you guys enough, but I say it to them, like, they're, they're great, they're great. We have top-notch employees in that building, and, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we can't always bonus them with monetary things because of the municipality, but this is one way, maybe we can give them something little that people, people around town have donated, because they've been probably gone above and beyond for the employees. The employees have gone above and beyond for the residents, so they've donated money that's just been sitting in this account, so I, I.
Yeah.
I think that's a great, on the people that donated, so thank you for all that, for that, for those listening and everything else, and, no, I think that's a great idea, that we, we value our employees and giving them a couple shirts, it'll be, they look sharp and professional, and it gives them, it gives them an idea what they're wearing to work the next day, which is always easy when you're wearing a uniform.
That's all, I just wanted to ask your permission.
Absolutely. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to use the funds from donations, donation account to purchase town polos.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just noticed that it's also coming from a local business that's going to do them, so that, that's it.
Perfect. Win-win, two-for.
And that was all Lola, I think, right? Wasn't, I don't want to, I don't want to not give you credit if it was you, but I think it was Lola.
Zip-up that she wears.
Lola was the one that vetted all of that.
All right, moving on, agenda item fifteen, this is a vote whether approve the addendum number, addendum number two between Town or Free Town and Architectural Consulting Group for the O P M for fire station number three additions or renovations, so just.
This, they actually asked for this because they're going to be paid for before the end of the project, so they asked us to stall the payments and push them back a little bit, so this is just stopping payments for six months while we get caught up with our architect, while we're just going back and forth with the architect, because they're really, there, there's no construction for them to be out on site for.
Gotcha.
So they just asked for sort of an extension so that, you know, we don't, we have them fully paid before we've even begun construction.
Yep, that makes sense. Any questions or concerns?
No.
All right, for that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the addendum, addendum number two between Town or Free Town and Architectural Consulting Group for O P M for fire station number three additions, renovations.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item sixteen, vote whether to approve utilizing five thousand dollars of the Formula One grant monies to provide programming to the council and agent. I thought we already voted on this, I thought we already voted on this before, but I might.
Thought the same thing, I saw it.
So they get like forty thousand dollars, and they have to technically tell you what they're using it for, so I think they do it in piecemeal as they, as they figure out what they need, they need, they come, they come before the board, and they say, we want five thousand for this. They might come and say, we need twenty-five hundred for that, so that's why you're probably thinking there's multiple times, because they do come.
Gotcha. All right, let's, go with me, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve utilizing five thousand dollars of Formula One grant monies for five programming at the council and agent.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a peddler, peddler's license request from Sunrun. I looked at the, like, looked at the application here. Obviously, I don't have any issues with this. Don't know exactly what it's for, though.
So they're just a, a solar company that wants to have the permission to be able to go door-to-door.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
Based, yeah.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah, I never knew that they had to do that, I always thought that that was just something they had to get permission from the police station.
Well, they're always coming to my house.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, but, I mean, anyone have any issues with that?
No. Well, not, not an issue, but you're right, they do come to people's homes, and sometimes they take a little longer than they, they should. Well, so we want those people getting, not harassed, but people getting, they're, some knocking their door and asking if they want solar.
Yeah.
They showed up to my house today.
Yeah.
And I told them to call the police station and file with them, because they had no, no notice to, and I, and I know what it takes, but I didn't think that they would have to get a peddler's license, but I thought they had to at least notify the town that they were going to be going door-to-door, so I think.
Yeah, they came to the police station, who sent them to town hall, to the town clerk who sent them up to us.
So that's where we are now.
That's where we are.
So, and I, and I think we probably should try to make them call the police and let them know when they're going to be in the area, because we have had some stuff going on this week where people have just been out on properties, taking pictures and stuff, and they think we've sent people out, and they call the town hall, and I'm like, no, we don't have anybody out. So it'd be good for the police and probably somebody at the town hall to know that, yeah, they're working in the area so that when we do get those calls, we say, yeah, and they're, you know, if it's Sunrun, they're there, so we can kind of let them know that that's what they should do, just to let the police know that they're working in.
They should be letting the police know as well as wearing some sort of formalized badge or something, right?
Yeah, identification.
Identification, yeah.
So should I put that into the vote here, or?
I think so, I think that they need to notify the police of the area, the, the dates and the areas they're going to be in, and that they have to wear an identification.
Yep, okay, so with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve peddler's license request from Sunrun, given that they provide the police the information of where and when they will be, and that they are wearing some kind of identifying, I don't know, badge.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ooh, this is interesting. I didn't see this one, I was looking at this earlier, so this is a vote whether approve opening the beach gate one day a week, year-round for seniors.
So this came up at, I think, one of our breakfasts, I'm not sure, I think it came up, and then it was reiterated to me that some of the seniors like to go down to the beach, they like to walk, they like to sit on the benches, they like to sometimes fish there. But of course, in the wintertime, it's locked, and they can't get down there, so they have asked if we could open it up one day a week. Actually, I think they said one day a month, I thought, well, one day a week might be better for them, and so that they can utilize it in the off-season for themselves, and it's a resource that the town has, and I, you know, so I said, oh, lots of selectmen, you know, I don't know, we have to probably figure out logistics of opening the gate, right? That's, that's an issue for us, so that's part of the reason this is on here, but.
I just thought of this, so my house, right, I have like a Nest, like I have like a, like I can unlock my anything from anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
I wonder if that technology has gotten to the gate.
We just don't have Wi-Fi access, I don't know if you probably need Wi-Fi for that, but that's a good idea.
I think you just have it on timers or whatever, and then just have it press a button and unlock.
We, we can look into it, but.
So I would think that if we're going to do it, we would have to do it for, so if we're going to say, send Tim there, we would have to do it during the hours of the town hall.
That's what I'm thinking.
So that way, we're not trying to pay someone additional money.
Yeah.
In order to have to go out there or have a gatekeeper or someone going down there.
I, I was thinking either Tim or even Chuck's, you know, Chuck is always gracious in anything that we ask him to do, so it would have to be, you know, open it up at either seven or eight A M. and close it by three-thirty, four o'clock, I don't think the seniors are going to be out there all night anyway, I think they just want to have a place once a week that they can go to, like I said, walk, sit on the bench, just be able to get out.
Keep an eye on stuff, make sure it's, because you know, we'll hear about it if there's a mess down there or anything, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, I guess then the only other part is, is there, you're. Yeah, I guess then the only other part is, is you're talking year round and there's snow, removal of snow.
Snow removal.
So that's really the issue is, I mean, for their safety as well.
How about we say weather permitting?
Yes.
Definitely say weather permitting.
Perfect. So I'll entertain a motion to approve opening the beach gate one day a week, uh, year round during business hours, weather permitting.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor? All right, next is whether or not to approve a lease for a twenty twenty-two Dodge Ram fifteen hundred SSV crew cab truck for the police department.
This is part of their ongoing lease program that they have.
And it's what, fifty-five or fifty-eight thousand dollars all in?
Fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
For principal, the principal and all in. Fifty-eight all in.
Now, is this replacing another vehicle? Is this, is this the idea or we're just adding another one to the fleet?
No, it is replacing one, but it escapes me what it's replacing right now. Chief Rose came in to me and went over the whole lease program to some extent with me.
It's definitely in line with the lease program. As one retires out, they include another one in. So, okay, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, if they need it.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease for new twenty twenty-two Dodge Ram fifteen hundred SSV crew cab, uh, truck for police department.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor? All right, now we have a discussion on the ADA grant status and use of town funds for engineering.
So you know, we did the ADA self-evaluation transition plan. And then there was, um, the next grant round is to actually do projects. So the two that Victoria from planning worked on was the, um, handicap bathrooms at the town hall and a Lulu lift at the COA. The maximum, I think, grant amount is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Through our town building improvement fund, we funded a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the bathrooms last year. So I have money for the bathrooms at the town hall. And I told, uh, you know, Victoria and I had a conversation that it makes sense for us to do these two projects. There's a town portion we have to put in about fifty thousand dollars for each grant application. There's only a six months time to spend the money on construction. Both projects need engineering done. So I wanted to ask permission to use our funds, which we have in the building improvement fund to do the engineering on these both projects to get it started, because we're not gonna know until probably January whether we get the grants or not. And my thought process was, we already fund, we already have the funds to do the bathrooms. So we have to do the engineering regardless. And, and we can get that started now and hopefully we get a grant and we can repurpose the money that we have or add it to the project depending on what it comes in.
Move it around, yeah.
The COA, my thought process is a Lulu lift is something I think would benefit them regardless of whether we get the grant or not. So if we spend the money on the engineering for the Lulu lift, we may be able to go to town meeting and reallocate some of their money to do this project if they want this project done. So even if we don't get the grant, I don't think it's a waste of money, but it's money coming out of the, you know, building improvement, um, account that we have. So I, but I wanted to ask your permission. I've talked to the town accountant. He's, he's fine with it. I just wanted to ask the board's permission if you thought that that was a, a good use of the money if we didn't get the grant, you know, especially the Lulu lift or we don't get the grant. And, and just to put it in perspective, the bathroom engineering is probably twenty-five thousand, the Lulu lift's engineering is thirty-five thousand.
Okay, yeah.
So those monies would become, we have the funds and, but I just wanted to keep you in the loop and give you my perspective on what I thought and why, you know, why this would make sense.
I think it makes sense and it starts moving the needle forward, right? Regardless. It helps us. So that way, if these projects come to fruition, you've already got that piece of the puzzle done.
Right.
Which we all know each piece can take a long time. So people hear about things and hear about things and it takes a while for things to actually start to happen. So it's good to kind of get out ahead of it. So thank you.
That was my thought, but like I said, I just kind of wanted to make sure that I wasn't overstepping and that you were all okay with it.
Yeah. So no vote needed, you don't think, or?
I probably just wanna vote just because, so that, you know, a motion that to allow me to use the building improvement funds to do the engineering for the.
Lift and the, and the bathrooms?
Yep.
Yep. All right, so I'll entertain a motion, um, to use the, the improvement, what's, what's that, the building improvement funds?
Yep.
Uh, to use for the engineering for the Lulu lift and the engineering for the, um, bathroom.
Handicap.
Handicap bathrooms.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, this is, uh, for town administrators to negotiate collective bargaining agreements if assigned selectmen not able to attend a meeting. Yes?
Yes, definitely a yes.
I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve town administrator to negotiate collective bargain agreements if a sign that selectman is not able to attend a meeting.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
That was a very unanimous one that we just had there. Wanted a little extra excitement.
No, that's good to have, especially with, you know, things get crazy, people get sick, lot going on. All right, so we have our new rates for the health insurance for retirees effective one-one twenty twenty-four. Not much we can do about this, right?
Actually, we, we, we've added some, a third layer, a third option for the retirees to try to get in some lower cost. We're also working on, uh, the town hall, you know, the, um, active employees. So we are working on ways to reduce it, but no, basically, these are the retiree rates, the, the board met, the, um, health insurance advisory board, uh, committee met and recommend these to you. And yeah, there's really not a whole lot we can do at this point.
Yeah, and just for the public, so the, the medex two increased six point two eight percent. And then the managed blue for seniors to increase four point three eight percent, right? This is the monthly contribution rates.
Yeah, it's too bad. Coal that only went up for two, three point two percent this year for all the social security retirees. So I would have liked to see them higher for the seniors, but
All right.
Nothing we can do about that.
Yep. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new rates for health insurance, uh, for retirees effective one-one twenty twenty-four.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item twenty-three. Discussion vote whether to vacate the tax lien judgment upon receipt of full payment of the real, uh, real estate liability on fifty-three and fifty-five Narrows Road, Sonnet. So this is pretty much if, you know, the town took, or was in the process of taking title to the, to the property.
We have ta, we have taken it for tax title.
But there's a year grace period or someone can, you know, pay back that, or maybe a buyer comes in and pays that, they can then pretty much take it out of the town's hands.
Right. So, uh, as of November fourth, that, that's a year from when we did the tax taking. They have a year sort of probationary. They can try to, they can relinquish the property and pay the taxes and get it back. But it requires a vote of the selectmen. The selectmen can say, no, they don't wanna, uh, relinquish the tax lien. We're really not in the business of
Yeah.
land, so.
If someone else wants to take this property, I think that I support that.
Yep.
Roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So it's substantial to the town. So, um, yeah, that's, but we just need your vote saying yes, that you wanna, you know, uh, vacate the lien if they pay in full.
Any questions or concerns? All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to vacate the tax lien adjustment, uh, last tax lien judgment upon receipt of full payment of the real estate tax liability on fifty-three fifty-five Narrows Road, Sonnet.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'll kick it over to personnel.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Item agenda twenty-four, acknowledge and resignation of Michael McHugh from the COA Library Committee Building Committee effective nine nineteen twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mike, for your services. For those out there listening, we're, we need additional bodies. So if you wanna volunteer, let us know. Item agenda twenty-five, discussion on Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Committee representative from Freetown. All right. So this is another, a second one. So this is just discussion and then, and a couple of different, uh, items. We have some candidates. So as we know, we, as a town, approved us joining Bristol Plymouth Vocational Tech School. So now we need somebody that's on their school committee until the next election, which I believe is in about, is it the same time as our regular elections, Debbie? I couldn't find it. Uh, but whatever. So this appointment is just appointed by the board of selectmen and the school committee as a joint down the road. And then once the election, uh, cycle takes place, the individual we appoint either chooses to continue on as in a, to, to get elected, then you have to follow all the rules to appoint as a elected official. Or you decide to step down at the election cycle and someone else takes your spot. So that's, uh, the, the general background of this position. So.
I have a question. So like, is this something that we should work with the school committee on though? Or is, how, how's that?
So the school committee, um, I believe we have four members for the Freetown. So once we approve this, it is my understanding that we would then speak with the school committee or vote with the school committee to make sure they're all on the same page.
We probably have to have a joint vote maybe of everybody together, so.
So.
It's one of those weird things that kind of crosses over multiple.
Yeah, we went back and forth and looked at all the, the bylaws and all the different rules in place for the district. And, and technically, well, not technically, the truth is, this isn't part of our district, our school district as it is. This, although we're part of their district, it's their district. It's not, it's not ours. So it's, it's a little confusing when you look at how it's all set up.
But we have, we need our.
Right, we need representatives, right. There are a lot of things going on that, you know, for both the school committee and the town, we need someone there to advocate for our students first and foremost, and then the parents, and of course the town. And of course, we need, we need all that information to make sure we are making the right decisions as, as, as a unit, right, together.
I'm wondering if, um, it might be best for us to like table this and go and have it maybe next Monday before the town meeting, right? Because then you should have representation from the school committee there and you, because we have that meeting before the town meeting. And that way you all can be in a room together and we can post it accordingly.
Yeah, so do we invite the school committee, the rep, sorry, the representatives from the school committee for the town.
Yeah. And I apologize. I've been trying to reach out unsuccessfully to the school committee to get them to, to, so maybe that I can, um, most likely, you know, they're usually at the town meeting.
Yeah.
So that you get all seven of you in a room to hash out what you think is best for BP.
So here's a, here's a question. If we do that, can we vote on it at that point and have it stick because they're away from the school community? So would they have to place, and this is kind of more of a.
I think it's just the four of them in this, in a room, right? Because it's not the Lakeville people that have to vote. It's just the Freetown.
But then are they gonna be able to vote on behalf of the school committee without being in a meeting? I wonder, that's something.
Well, I think they would have to post a meeting. They would have to, like, you know how we do joint meetings? They have to post their meeting. You have to post your meeting and you come together. They adjourn, you know, they open theirs, you open yours, and then you vote, and then they adjourn. That might be easier to get them in with us next.
Well, you said, you said you've already tried to reach out and everything else. Seems like they're, I don't know, maybe they're busy. But assuming you're Mr. Lapre, right? So I like to hear from the candidate while he's here. So, so that's not a waste of his time coming here tonight. Skip over to agenda twenty-seven D. Charles L. Lapre, Joseph Zini, um, both sent their paperwork in to be appointed. If you can give him a couple of minutes to tell the world about himself and, and why you wanna be on this committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alves. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Lapre. I live at Seven Hells Drive in East Freetown. I've been a resident of Freetown since November of nineteen seventy-seven, probably before many of you were born. I'll save you from doing the math, sixty. That way it clears it all up. I have a professional educator. Uh, I've been in education for over thirty-five years. Matter of fact, I just retired from the New Bedford Public Schools on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I hold four professional educator licenses in Massachusetts. And during my tenure in New Bedford, I also served as the secretary treasurer and a vice president of the New Bedford Educators Association. So in those roles, I'm, I'm really familiar with education law and how everything works. Also, um, I helped to negotiate some contracts. So I'm also familiar with that as well. And I realized that if I were doing that for the BP school committee, I would be on the other side of things. So, um, but it, it certainly was a, was a learning experience. As far as why I would like to be on the BP school committee, I am an enthusiastic supporter of vocational education. Matter of fact, most of my really good students in New Bedford went on to be quite successful at Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School. I always told my students in the classroom that you don't have to go to college to be successful. For some people, that's the route they wanna take, but if you measure success as being happy in your job and making some money, right, that, you know, there's a lot of vocational, technical careers that will fulfill all of those responsibilities and, and will help you in life. I'm really familiar with the role of the school committee in Massachusetts that you hire and fire the superintendent. You evaluate the superintendent, you set policies, and you set the budget, and that's it. If selected for this position, I realize I would be the point person for Freetown. You know, you've made a substantial commitment, this town, to the BP school district. We're lucky that we're able to join a top-notch district like that. So, you know, I would be there to represent the interests of the town to make good decisions so that, you know, the youngsters from Freetown and, you know, the other member towns in the district would be able to, um, you know, still partake and, and really enhance and expand the program there. And I also realized that, you know, there would probably be some parents that might be concerned about, you know, their child's relationship with BP. And, you know, I'd be willing to take on that role and kind of advocate for that parent and help him to, like, negotiate through, you know, the bureaucracy that is part of any school system. So I thank you for the opportunity to address all of you tonight. If I am the successful candidate, um, I have an entry plan in mind that I would reach out to the superintendent. I would want to meet with him and the administration. Also, with your permission, I'd like to spend a day at the school, be one of the first, just, just like when I was a teacher in the classrooms. It's weird using the past tense. You know, I was always one of the first in, one of the last out, and I'd like to do that for a day. And, you know, just to get a feel for the climate, the culture, et cetera. I would be an active and enthusiastic participant, but above all, I'd be a listener, just like all of you have to listen in your roles. So I, I thank you for allowing me to address the, uh, the board tonight. I'm kind of disappointed you're not taking a vote tonight, but from, from the sound of it, but I'm willing to speak to anybody that has any questions, et cetera.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you for, for your, your comments and, and discussing with us, because it is important, you know, there are parents out there that want to know what's going on with their kids' education. And we do need a strong voice to make sure they're being told what's going on, the good and the bad, you know, not everything's great, right? So being honest and truthful and transparent is what they're looking for. So you, you know, you'd be a great candidate. As you know, we, we don't have the school committee here, so we could potentially be in a position that we vote you in and then we, they vote you out. So we, so to save a couple of headaches that go back and forth, we wanna make sure we're all on the same page. And we do apologize that, um, you did come all this way to come speak with us. And again, thank you, but like.
Sure, you enjoyed, you enjoyed the meeting anyway, right?
You know, I, I taught civics, so this is really up my, up my alley and.
You know exactly how, how these things work at times. And, uh, we, yeah, we were, all came here, I think, with the, make, trying to make a decision today, but knowing the circumstances surrounding it, we do need the other school committee members, um, to hear their thoughts as well. That's the only proper way to do it.
Sure, I understand.
So, um, thank you for applying and to, and Mrs. Zini as well, if you're listening or, or watching, or whatever the case may be. And, uh, we'll take this on as quickly as possible, because this is an important role. And I think your approach, getting there and getting your few, getting the ball rolling is the way to go. It's, uh, it's a lot of work, right?
Absolutely.
Short amount of time, but you have a building, you have students. Um, so, hey, thank you.
I am impressed, though, with, with what I've seen so far and, you know, and how the principal of the building communicates with parents, et cetera, in the newsletters. So you know, I, I've done some reading and, and looking and listening already, and hopefully I'll be selected for the role and can continue to do my homework.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate the time.
Continue on to item agenda twenty-six. It is to rescind the appointment of Mr. Michael El Silva as laborer from, from the nine eighteen twenty twenty-three meeting. Thank you, Mr. Silva, for interviewing with us and, and so on. The next item twenty-two, discussion of all the following appointments. I cannot do a, obviously, because I am Mr. Carlos A. Lopes. But I will. I cannot do A, obviously, because I am Mr. Carlos A. Lopes, uh but I will punt that over to you folks in a second. So we also have B, Keith Silver as Labor, Highway Department, effective ten eighteen twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-four. We had in addition, we have C, David A. Donahue, a single operator, full-time, professional, effective ten two twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-four. Uh we are scratching D from the record, which was to appoint a school representative for the BP Vocational Technical School Committee. That'll be on a later date. We have E, Samantha Gomes, Krista Mullen, and Cam Rizendes, through the Cultural Council, effective ten sixteen twenty twenty-three through ten sixteen twenty twenty-six. F, Carlton E. Abbey Junior, as the Health Insurance Advisory Committee Retirement Representative, effective ten one ten sixteen twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-four. I hereby entertain the motion to appoint the following, uh the agenda twenty-seven, B, C, E, and F.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll make a motion to uh appoint Carlos A. Lopes uh to this to the School Capital Committee, effective ten sixteen twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we need a vote on number twenty-six.
Twenty-six, rescind the appointment. All right. Uh we'll backtrack to item agenda twenty-six, who's resetting the appointment of Michael De Silva as Labor from the nine eighteen twenty twenty-three meeting. That said, I had obtained the motion to rescind the appointment of Michael De Silva as Labor from nine eighteen twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, item agenda number twenty-eight, discussion and vote on whether to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the town of Freetown and Public Unions Local Two Seven Two Launa Clerical Union. Things pretty straightforward, I believe.
This has been the um the one that we've been working on for some time with the clerical union regarding their step increases based on promotion date versus anniversary date, and it the way it was written, based on promotion date, it actually penalized some of the long-term employees. They weren't able to move up to their step because they got recent promotions, so we've been back and forth with the language and the specifics on this. Um I think at this point, we all are uh kind of in agreement if 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 this is something that the board would entertain.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, listen, if you guys are in agreement, and the unions in agreements, absolutely.
I I I honestly, there's there's it affects multiple people in the town hall and in the clerical union, and it it hurts, it's hurting morale and it's hurting the, you know, the their morale and, you know, why why stay if if we're gonna be penalized for being here ten years?
All right, no, the point retention, as we've all discussed it over the last years, it it's important, and this is one of those things that clears up, clears it all up, and you know, it's not a a huge incentive for every single employee at every single year, but it does matter when it's your turn and it's your time, and you've been there, you've earned it, so.
I agree.
I entertain the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the town of Freetown, Public Unions Plu- Public, uh, stop that over. I entertain the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the town of Freetown and Public Employees Union Local Two Seven Two Launa, which is the clerical union.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, nothing on foreign parts, and then Town Administrator Report, thank you very much, by the way.
Carlos, thank you, thank you.
So we just wanted to uh mention a few things, I I don't know if you're aware, but the Open Space Plan got official approval by Melissa Cryan at the state, which is extremely exciting, because it's not an easy feat, and they did an incredible job and getting this over the finish line. It again, you know, why we do a lot of the things we do, it opens us up so we can get grants uh moving forward. But this this board is also gonna come to you, I believe, because they are looking for the next step of what they can do and how they can um contribute to the town. So I've had some conversations with them, um they have some action items within the plan that they're looking to to take on. So if you get a chance, you might wanna look at those, I think they're gonna make a presentation to the board, though.
Awesome.
I did include in your packet just the just the discussion of outstanding tax bills, and that's just more of your information purposes. It's not something that you you would normally see, um it's public records, public information, but I just thought you might wanna look at it, because it's interesting, right? Quite a bit of money outstanding in taxes, and it's just an interesting look.
Much higher than I expected, that's was much higher than I expected.
Yeah, and nothing that you need to do anything with, but I just bringing information to the table for you to have.
So how long? Just wanna make sure I'm not on the list.
How long does it take, so we just talked about taking property over, right, that was in tax lien? What at what point does that, does any of these outstanding balances then get transferred over to us taking the property? Is there like a, is it based on dollar value, or is it?
So the the treasurer really controls all of this, and we've talked about putting in some standard policies, because in the past, I think it's been sort of personal, subject to personal opinion, right? If it's if it's if it's not a lot of money, we're not gonna take your property, it doesn't make sense for us to spend the money, we have to hire counsel to do all the taking. And 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 the if it's not extremely old, right, and you and you're making an attempt to pay it, we're not gonna take it. But it all comes down to personal preference, and we we've started talking about coming up with some straight policies to take that person out of it so that it doesn't matter who walks through that door, this is the rules, and this is how, so that they, you know, because they come and they're crying and they're upset, and they're like, this is my house, and we get it, right, we all been, maybe not been there, but in a situation similar, and we can we can feel empathy. But at the end of the day, this is the town's money, so um I think with Patty, we've talked about coming up with some, you know, if you owe less than this amount of money and you're one year behind, we'll give you a payment plan, we'll allow you two more year, you know, two years total, as long as you stay current, to pay it.
Yeah, and I guess that's to your point, is because I wanna work with the town's people, not against them, so but it would be nice to have a standard procedure in place that Patty Patty doesn't have to worry about if it's Carlos walking through the door or Jared walking through the door.
And that's hard, right? It's hard.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, it's been an impossible situation.
I don't, and I think that people knowing that there's room for this wiggle room might give them the advance to 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 come at you differently, right? Whereas if she has some sort of policy or procedure in place that says, look, this is what's happening, this is what has to be done.
Right, and so we're gonna work on that, we're actually, one of the things that I, we're we're being audited by um a firm that's handling the opera money, and one of the things they wanted to see was our financial policies. So we're actually, they they've been drafted but never approved, so we're in the process of trying to find all those those pretty quickly. You're gonna see them soon on your agenda, and this this is one that I would like to talk to, um I've been working, like I said, with Patty. Just because it is difficult, what if it is one, I mean, it isn't gonna be, but what if it's one of you or me? And I can't pay my taxes, and I'm crying, and 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 now she's in a position, this just makes it clear for everybody, these are the rules. If you don't, you know, th- this is what it is. But we're not in the business of taking people's property.
No.
So we always wanna work with the residents, so I I don't wanna make it seem like we won't, we do, and you'll see some payment agreements in there. So that's what's going on, but I also, like I said, just wanted to bring the information to you, I see it every, and I only see it because I've requested it. It's not something that generally gets shared, but I thought you might be interested to see what we got going on, and it does impact the town, so. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me or Patty, um or Lynette, Lynette is integral in the tax collection piece of this, so. Um and they do work diligently, Lynette's on the phone, she's sending letters, she's trying to collect the money before we go to a taking.
And I guess to that point, as and I don't wanna drag this on all night, but to that point of what they have to do, right, as far as saying, okay, you're X amount of days or months or years passed, do this is what they have to do, we we say they should make phone calls, send certified letters. Some of that stuff might already be in place, but I think it would be nice that it's standardized, so that way, if we ever have to go to court to take over the property, God forbid, we have everything and say, okay, here's all our policies, here's all our procedures, and they did, you know, eighteen phone calls, ten certified letters, whatever, some throw them.
Right.
Basic.
And I think that's one of the things I've been trying to do since I've been there, is make everything fair. You you may not like it, but it's fair and consistent. If we do it to you, we do it to that person, we do it to the next person. I do that with the employees, and now I I think some of these policies need to be, because if if the prior treasurer said, okay, I'm gonna let this, but now Patty says, oh, no, I don't wanna do that, and the next treasurer says, oh, I wanna do this, it's just very hard for us, the selectmen and and the administration, to really figure out what's going on with it. So and and to govern it, right, I I do check on these, I do have co- I do have meetings with Lynette and Patty and say, okay, what are we doing with this? They are on top of it one hundred percent, but, you know, if I didn't inquire, I wouldn't know, but they are, they're on top of it, but I think it should be standardized for sure, and and we'll work on that.
Yeah, I'm actually doing nothing else, Debbie. Have that done by the end of the week, please.
I'm on it, I'm on it. Uh, Wan will help me, she helps me do a lot of stuff. Um and the last one is the update on the fire station renovation addition project. We have been um the the the, there's been a few people meeting with the um the architect Stark. And they've come up with a draft design, which will be presented to the Building Committee this week, but we are over budget. So I kinda wanna put you there, that we're looking, we're gonna be one point two million dollars over budget. So there will be an ask at some point for that, I just wanted to get you all up.
One point two over budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Remind me what the budget was?
Three million.
Three million, but this, so that that was pretty low, and then based on what had to happen, there was some changes to the design, right? So I think that's really what drove the price, Debbie, if I'm.
I don't know, we're not, we're smaller in square footage than originally, I don't know if the feasibility study was wrong or it was just the timing, right? I don't know, because we're we're smaller than what the original addition was proposed to be. We've moved it to make it more, um we moved the location to make it work better with the existing mechanicals. So I don't know, I'm I'm still hopeful it'll come in under budget, but um giving, I I I've I feel like when we did this whole feasibility study originally, they there was ten things they needed, and I said, no, you can't have that. You can only have the top three, give me your top three needs, and that's what we're gonna get met, and this does that, no more than that, though. So I I feel like if we were to cut this to get it in the three million dollar budget, we'd be cutting one of their integral needs, which is new bunk space, new bay, a new apparatus bay, which the bunks are above the bay, so we've caught, you know, we've done the scale economy with that, and then a meeting room. So to cut, those were their top three out of ten. I I I can't really cut one of them, if I cut the bay, I'm cutting the bunk space up above two, um and the, you know what I mean, so as much as, I I will tell you, I mean, I have held their feet to the fire about this budget, like, no, 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 but at the end of the day, I feel like to go through the projects and the process that we have to to get a project up and running with the OPM, and then the architect, and all of this, it doesn't make sense for us to not give them the basic minimum of what they need, and this is what they need today. This is not a building that's gonna last them more than probably ten or fifteen more years. This isn't something we're building for fifty years into the future, and we don't have the room there, so it's not like it's even a possibility. So I I'm I'm extremely excited about the project, I want you to know, and they are too, when you see the plan, it's what they want, it's what they need, no more, there's no fluff in this. I've even said, like, take out the renovations of the existing building, they can do it themselves. But that's a small ticket item, but they will.
Point, though, Debbie, from everything I've seen with them and being involved with you, is that they've been very open to keeping things as modest as possible to just get what they absolutely feel like they need, and it's not, none of it is a hard ask, right? Women should not have to share bunk space with men.
And it's a small space at that, like, it's not this big room, it's right, so I think, and 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 the financial position of where the town is, and we do have some free cash, so it's not gonna raise taxes. Not gonna raise taxes, I just need to say that over and over again, it's not gonna raise taxes. So if we were in a different financial position, I think I would be pushing back, I would be saying, no, can't do it. But I I believe, and we still have to go to town meeting and get a vote, but I just want you all to hear, you know, um and make sure that Jared's on the committee with me, so he's gonna see the presentation in a couple of days, but just to hear it, so you knew what was going on. Um and 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 we'll get the vote from that committee and maybe come back for a vote with this board, but obviously, before we go to town meeting and ask for more money, would have to happen that way, but I'm gonna tell you that I've I've I I don't think there's a place for us to cut a million dollars out of this plan.
No, we gotta.
So that was it, I just wanted to keep you in the loop of that. Town Hall's moving along, everybody's moving along, we're preparing for next week's um town meeting.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah, sorry, hold on. You'll adjourn after signatures are signed.
Oh, I have to sign?
Keep it rolling.
Yeah, we're we're doing the same thing at home, whether or not turn on the heat or not, or start a fire, or. Indoor fire.
I don't have a a fireplace, I have a pellet stove, and I have to go buy pellets.
Cleaner, the only thing I like, I like the the crackling of the fire, the thing I don't like so much is like the wood splits off a little bit, and it's just gets messy after a while.
The dust in the house is all this smoke that can, you know. It's this pros and cons, but to your point, there's nothing like sitting next to a fire.
Oh, it's great.
An actual fire, you know.
Called some local companies to come clean it out, because I can't remember the last time I did it.
Yeah, that's something we don't wanna, we don't wanna have to call the neighbors.
So I did this thing.
Two. Three.
Five thousand dollars for the twenty-one.
Awesome.
Heather Thompson.
Not know that was even. I know, I I was doing the same, I had to put the pen down today, I kept touching myself.
Yeah, because it's annoying, you know what I mean, because it's probably picked up on the microphone.
Yeah, exactly. I know, I I I should not be trusted with with cool pens for the future.
And it's so funny, because when other people do it, it annoys me.
These are so comfortable.
I can't help myself.
I like how they write.
I say that about a lot of things I do.
So for us, they have the little cookout, you can, you know, send out your baby.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Because you're gonna quickly know that people rather see the baby than you.
Hundred percent.
It's kind of a good thing, sometimes you can hide behind your baby.
Yeah, hundred percent.
And this will just be you and Jared.
Okay.
All added to the wall.
Right. It's gonna make beautiful wallpaper.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.